Educating, Informing, Serving. TV. Keeping Government Honest.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. TV isn't on yet, not live. But it is six o'clock. It's Tuesday, February 4th. This is a regular scheduled Select Board meeting. We're in the third floor meeting room. So I'll hold this meeting to order. Additions to the agenda for routine administrative matters and replacing matters that will require ratification in a future meeting. Do we have any?
Yes, please. Just one, an executive session to discuss labor relations agreements with employees for one VSA Section 313A1. It shouldn't take a long time.
Okay. Anything else? Members of the board? Hearing none. Take motion to approve the minutes of January 21st and January 28th, special meetings.
Motion to approve the minutes of the Select Board meetings of January 21st and January 28th, 2020.
Seconded.
Motion made in second. Are there any corrections, additions, comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of the minute would vote aye.
Aye.
All those polled nay. Motion carries. Public comment, I know it's not on the agenda, three minutes per person. Seeing and hearing none, we'll go to manager's report.
Okay, just a few things. I just know the VCRD community visit is winding down and hopefully will turn into good action. The next... Is this television? Or it's not live, but it's on, right?
We're recording. It'll be on the website tomorrow.
Okay. So...
February 13th is the next session.
It's at the middle school at 6:30. And the three topics are building a youth center, advancing community energy efficiency and resiliency, and redeveloping Bellas Falls buildings. And everyone is welcome to come. And the idea is that each one of those things would result in a group and they would fill the project. They aren't things for the town to do, although the town would certainly be involved in, especially the redeveloping the buildings. There's a storm event Thursday and Friday, snow, sleet, and rain, so not much fun. Good time to see a movie. The Little Women is playing at the Opera House this week. And then winter break is coming up, so the rec department Facebook page will have information on that. That's all I have.
Move on to the agenda. Public Works, Everett Hammond, Finance Maintenance Agreement, Depot Street Bridge.
Okay. This is similar agreement to the one you saw two weeks ago, the agreements ago. I don't see any issues with it. The attorney looked at it, he didn't see any issues. It's the Depot Street Bridge. Moving forward on that, I think they've already kind of started some of the work anyway.
Yeah, they started the design.
Yeah.
And this agreement provides for cost sharing at 5% versus the normal 10% because the town's providing the detour. And it has been reviewed by the town attorney.
Let's see, when you approve it. Peter, I take it you'd be willing to sign it with an authority? Don't sign here, sign here from an authority. What's your idea?
Yeah.
I'll be in tomorrow, I can sign it tomorrow. Anybody have any questions?
I'd make the motion we approve.
Before you do that, I got something that's going to ask me. Anybody else? Probably did. Board will play on page two, number seven of the bonds of payment of participation damages to waters. Expect damage and property down there?
If it's damaged by contract, it'd be a contract issue. But damages could be right away needed, so that's what they're looking at. Any right of way needed, that's damage to that person?
Five of sixteen, number eleven, it says relocation of municipal utilities. What's classified as municipal utilities? Is that the sewer and water lines? Because I thought that was included in the contract. If it was this bridge, they were supposed to move them as part of the new bridge we had to pay for. The other one.
I did email that a while back. I'm not sure if I've ever heard back, actually.
To the state? No.
I just wonder what they classify as utilities. If it's a water and sewer, then I thought that was included in the contract if we did the bridge in place. If we did the other one off alignment, then we had to pay to relocate the...
In the past, they've gotten away from that. Like we, the village, we're paying for the relocation of utilities.
It could have been that the difference was the village would have paid in this case and the town would have paid in the other case. That might have been. But, sorry, I don't... It was...
Either way, we'll find out. It'll be a matter of if it's going to cost a village. I'll put that all well in advance so they can start budgeting.
Yeah.
It won't cost the town anymore on this.
Twenty twenty-three.
I got the private old utility, because that's a power line and that's for that.
You can postpone this until the next meeting if you want to. We're concerned about that.
Yeah, I could have sworn that they said that if it was sewer and water lines are going to be, had to be relocated or replaced, then they would, I don't think had to be relocated. They're just, there may have to be some work, some reconnections and things down there. And that was supposed to be included in the contract from what I understand. Maybe I'm wrong, but somebody can check that before we get there.
Right.
I guess that's all we have. So you don't, or wouldn't want to postpone this till we get a definite answer, or?
It's not going to make a difference for this board. And they're not going to change the outcome. It's either they pay or they don't.
Well, if it goes separate, we could debate that if you want to, because we've got to get the cough up the butt, so.
Yeah, because it says any approved cost sharing shall occur provided in separate utility agreements. So I'm sure they'll have a utility agreement with the village. And I think you're right. I'm pretty sure they said they're paying for it. If we keep it where it is, they're paying for it. But that would be a separate utility agreement with the...
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we're clear on that, that's all.
Yeah, so we'll confirm that and get back to you. So it sounds like you do want to just approve it now, is what I'm hearing.
Hey, you want to sign this tomorrow?
Well, it has to be approved.
Okay, so I can just...
Yeah, so there's a sample motion on the...
Yeah. Somebody want to make the motion that we approve the finance and maintenance contract?
I vote approval of the finance and maintenance agreement with the state of Vermont and authorize the Select Board chair to sign the lease.
Seconded.
Motion made in second. Any further comments? Hearing none, all those who vote in favor would say aye.
Aye.
All those polled nay. I will come in tomorrow and sign it. All right. Item number two, Development Office, Gary Fox.
So we have two proposals in the packet, and one of them dragged out the divine covenant. And we have Common Sense Basin Farm, three businesses that folks are here to answer questions. The proposal is to begin, have a lease term starting on April 1st, and they would be going in the week before to start being able to set up, fit up, that sort of thing. And guess, you folks want to talk a little bit about your business in the site? Introduce yourselves.
Yoel Belgrasso, and this is Maitzer Racine. We're folks from the Basin Farm, and also the community that operates the Basin Farm here in Bellas Falls, Westminster, in alignment. We're interested in opening a store in town to feature the local products that we make, that we produce from the farm, our mill workshop, railroad and pork waffle, and also some natural soap and body care products, of which we have some samples here. These are products that are made in local, locally manufactured. And so we'd like to have a store to feature those things, as well as maybe pull in other products that helps the area make. But the focus is going to be to try to, on local things, you know, things that are from around here. So, you know, we'd like to be able to have a presence in the town and put those things out there and just add to the, to the, what's going on in downtown.
What alterations? Looking at these pictures, they're kind of neat looking. Just wondering what alterations you guys were claiming to make down there to that pretty basic downtown right now?
Yeah, what I would say is, as far as whatever the alterations are, it would be mainly the store fixture type things that we could bring in in sections to create the, sort of the atmospheric environment that we'd like. You know, obviously, we would, there probably would be some improvements that we'd like to do to the space and the way of lighting, you know, maybe some painting, other things. But clearly, it's a lease premise, so there's, it's got to be a limit to how far you can go with changing this area. But seems like that would be worked out, spelled out in the lease agreement.
And we're looking at a two-year lease term?
Two?
Two years, yes.
I thought it said one.
It may have. The proposals for a two-year lease term begin in April 1st.
Yeah, RFP says one-year lease, two-year lease preferred. And then, do you want to speak to the rents? Because it's more than what you can receive.
So you've agreed if it were to work out for a two-year lease?
Yes. But I mean, that's, certainly that's up to you, but...
I was going to, I'm not interested. I'd like to move away from a one-year lease and perhaps entertain a three-year lease, which is kind of the standard these days for retail space, three to five years, three to five years, believe it or not. We could agree to a three-year lease, get someone in there who's going to stay, and it looks like a beautiful shop.
Well, I don't know if they've had a chance to think about three years.
I don't know either, but I haven't had a chance to discuss it, so.
Sure.
Suggesting we maintain a three-year lease.
We were fine with two years. I don't think it would be a major leap to go to three, but we'd probably want to consider. But I think two years definitely wasn't, wasn't going to be a problem. And probably just want to talk about it a little bit more. If we're going to go to three, we're not opposed to it.
About two-year, two-year at least for the three years, that's your option?
I mean, a two-year is also fine. I just thought this was for one year and I was going to discuss a longer lease. But if two years, what you agreed on, you know, going back and you could leave it as an option, sure, I think two years is great.
Two years certainly works for us, and we would actually prefer an option to renew if possible.
Is that the name?
Yes, we can. We can structure it that way, sure.
We really haven't gone through the lease agreement yet. We just saw another deal, so.
Okay.
Take the time to look it over.
All right, so the board, do you have any other questions for them, or do you have any?
I have one more. So you'd also consider selling other local organic farmers' products, or not?
Certainly, things that, things that would go along with the nature of the store that we...
Yeah, so since our farm is seasonal, so there's things that we may have available, things we may not have available, that other farms may have. Like first thing in the spring, we would probably bring things in from the food network, which our farm sells into some, but the food network, you probably know what it is. All the farms sell their, not all the farms, but a lot of the organic farms sell their produce or products into the food network. The network delivers to their customers, which could be restaurants, stores, schools.
Is it Food Connects?
It's Food Connects, and they aggregate all the, all the small farms in the county in order to provide enough product to sell to institutional customers. They aggregate all of the...
Well, they actually go to box, they sell at box.
Yeah, our produce ends up different places in New Hampshire. But I would say that the initial idea about the store was originally based on wanting to have an outlet or a place that we could sell these products. And that's just, that's just a sampling of what we make over there. For those, for those two brands, which is Common Sense Soap and Green Mountain Soap, those are locally made. And the displays, like what he said, the displays that those would be displayed on would be made by us in our mill workshop over there. And that could also act as, as a display or as an advertisement for the work that we do, which is custom architectural millwork. We also do kitchens, residential kind of work. So it would kind of be a way for us to show off some of our millwork capabilities, but also it would be displaying those products, which we'd like to make available locally. Those are available online and through mail order. That's the way it's been sold ever since, ever since my dad started it in the eighties. But we'd like to actually have a store. There is stores that carry our products, from general stores, health food stores. We wanted to have a store locally. And then we would also bring in those farm items, that's what we said, have some, like reaching toolers where you could get fresh produce, and also other value-added farm, farm things like, you know, the products that are made from the produce, like salsa, you know, the different things that you would... And then we would probably eventually have some baked goods that are made at the kitchen of the farm to go along with, like, I don't know if you read the proposal, but we would have a little bit of hospitality, like with tea, maybe some coffee possibly, and some baked goods. Wouldn't be a full-on restaurant, but it would be somewhere where you could come get some, some pastries and a cup of tea, that kind of thing.
And could you talk about how the business is structured? Do you pay sales tax to the state and...
So we are, the only taxes we, we pay less of would be income tax because of the way our finances are structured, but we pay property tax, we pay sales tax, we pay every other tax. But since our, since all of our income is pooled together as a community, we pay less on income tax because it's...
It's divided equally among the members, and so we pay according to what each member shares.
So yes, we would pay sales tax just like everyone else would, because we'd be charging sales tax, so that, right, the sales tax would go to the state and...
Or local bills.
Yeah, however it applies. So really, we're not exempt, other than, like even sometimes, we do pay sales, we do pay income tax based on how much we make that year, but it all just gets calculated based on how that all works, so.
Thank you.
So you have plans to sell meat products down there? I mean, I said there's an option at the farm.
Yeah.
I mean, you guys ran a great restaurant down there when it was years ago, and you did lunches and stuff in there.
Right. There, we don't want to get too ahead of ourselves.
Yeah.
But we have talked about maybe eventually down there.
Yeah.
If we had, if we had a couple sandwiches, maybe, like very basic, but not, not a full-on restaurant, or if we would have a nice setup, and obviously it would have to be approved and certified by the health department, that kind of thing, but we would make a few sandwiches. But for now, the products that are made elsewhere can be displayed down there.
Because that sort of leads into my next, next question, was if your operation would adhere to ethical labor and a fire safety codes?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, let out the age, when the age is, you know, for no underage people working there, things like that.
Talk about the store?
Yeah.
Yes. Definitely, we would want to abide by any of those normal standards.
Any other questions on the board? Someone want to make a motion on? There's one suggested motion on.
I think we approve the lease of the town hall north storefront with Basin Farm.
Do you have it as a community in Westminster, or is that, what's the official name of your...
The entity that signs the lease agreement is probably going to be the Basin Farm. It won't be community in Westminster. Probably the Basin Farm or the Common Sense Store, one of the other.
Lease of the town hall north storefront with Basin Farm for a two-year term. Move.
Option to renew.
At $755 per month. We'll be coming in a week early to upfit and authorize municipal manager to sign the lease.
Seconded.
Motion made seconded. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion would vote aye.
Aye.
All those polled nay. Seems to be all set.
Congratulations.
Great, I'm glad.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is that basket for sale?
Did you make the baskets?
My wife, I don't know yourself. Not the contents, all of that.
Yeah.
Yeah. They all...
You also have a...
I'll give you that here. I'll give you some money, I'm not trying to get anything for free.
Oh, no, we brought that so you could see a little bit of what we'd be offering down here.
It's great that she already likes the style.
She was shocked when she, I showed her.
That's great.
Okay, let's go down to number three on the agenda. Town meeting preparation, I assume we're going to try and assign some motions here on the article.
Yeah, that was the purpose of this.
Sign us, we, if you don't feel comfortable tonight, we've got one more week or a month meeting, we can do that before we get to town meeting.
Doesn't matter to you?
Yeah, I have no objections.
I mean, I can just go down, one, two, three, and then go over again, or work with the chair.
All right, so we're going to be starting with Article three, I believe.
If there's no objections, maybe she can just do it.
Yeah, and I, I can work with you, Peter.
Yeah, okay, because I'll be in tomorrow anyway.
Yes, okay.
All right. Come on, get in the mood, I'm saying.
All right. Yeah, my total...
Okay, and then we can bring it back on the age, and let them, you know, trade off or whatever.
Yes.
All right, let's go on to number four, regional broadband initiative.
Yeah, and I gave you just a little copy of an email on this. Wyndham Regional Commission received a grant to work on a regional broadband initiative. And I'm just asking you to designate me, if one of you wants to do it, I might take myself off of it, because Bonnie North is, would like to go to these meetings. What's, what's happening is the state has allowed a certain type of legal structure to be created, and I think Wilmington and Dover, there's a couple of towns in Wyndham counties that are already going to do it. We don't have to be next to those towns to join them. And there will be some benefits if we want to do it. There's no funding commitment. This is just a state part of the conversation. So I think it's worthwhile, and I...
Was this a group, there was, they were, there was a group going around, they spoke in Lendary last night, is this about?
I don't know, they're going to...
Someone I know is on that committee, and they're...
They may have spoken.
At the Select Board, they came and presented.
I'm sorry, they had a meeting today.
Lendary? Lendary last night, somewhere different today.
Well, the next meeting of this group was going to be Thursday, but because of the weather, they're postponing it. So I don't know if that's the same one. I kind of doubt it, because this, I went to a meeting...
Excuse me, that, this one was held in Wilmington, wasn't it, one time? The first one?
Well, it still is. Yeah, yeah, because I went, the first meeting was, I think, in Wilmington about maybe two months ago, and I went to that one.
That's what I was going to say, that's the one I remember seeing that advertised. I think this was going to be at Newfane.
Yeah, and all of the more recent ones have been at, at Newfane. And this one is, what they're doing now is trying to survey the community to find out, mostly, I expect, how much people will pay, because that's always the key, because everyone says, yeah, I want fiber, but then you say, well, you pay more than 20 bucks a month, and they say, no, I don't want to. But, and I want to get some information for you. Paul Noble, the Lister, has, just some information from going to community meetings, where there are folks who've moved to their neighborhood because it has good, good fiber and good connections. So people are making decisions on where they buy property based on, on the broadband capacity.
They realize that the 13th is also a community visit day.
Well, they aren't involved in the visit. So, well, I think they're doing it the following Thursday, but I don't know the rescheduled date. I'm sorry.
It's the 13th.
So it's the 13th. Okay.
Go ahead.
What's the commitment involve appointing you? You had mentioned Bonnie North, so as far as meetings and extra stuff for you, what's that?
I would go to the, even if I'm not appointed, I'm going to go to as many as I can of the meetings, just to stay in touch with it. But if one of you is interested in doing it, I would have that person and Bonnie North be the representative, or it could be me and Bonnie North, and we can keep you guys up to date. Or you can come to the meetings too. You don't have to be the person, the designated person that comes to meetings. I can let you know when the meetings are.
I would rather not designate you if we have a choice here.
Sure.
Just, if you want to go on your own, that's your choice, but more meetings for you is not.
No, but I'm going to end up coordinating anyway, to the extent that the town submits anything. But thank you for your understanding, so that you can just appoint Bonnie North and if any of you are interested.
But do you know how much it's going to consist of, like, once a month?
I expect it wouldn't be more than once a month, but it would be evenings in Newfane, and it's generally Thurs, or no. Do they do Thurs days? Yeah. Except February 13th is into Thursdays. I know it is, I'm sorry. So probably will be Thursdays.
From the board?
Yeah. Maybe Bonnie North, if you want.
Please do want to, but that's just a one.
Is anyone on this board interested? Is anyone on this board interested, you're on Thursdays?
I just want to make some comment, that while I was out riding around a couple of weeks ago, listening to BTR, I believe they were referencing, there was some discussion about the broadband and the fiber and all that. And I guess a lot of utilities, it's expensive.
It can be.
Yeah, it, it's my understanding from what I heard, that a lot of utilities choose not to pursue it because it's evidently not that financially feasible with the return, but...
They're finding new ways to make it much more affordable and more efficient. A lot of lines are out of place.
Yeah, but it's expensive to lay them lines, because we talked about that when we were doing the street down there.
Yeah, but don't we...
And there's certain criteria for who's, has access to that piping or...
I still think we should put conduit in, if that's what you're talking about.
Well, yeah, and I, from the trustee standpoint, haven't looked at that. The, from what I read, that was all well and dandy, but then there may have been some people out there, or a group or organization that said, if I elect to rent that, lease that space from you and run my optic lines through there, I don't want anybody else in my, in that container. So I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot to it. But I mean, I don't have any problem with this. I'm just letting you know, there's other sides to the story, and some people who've been in the business longer than probably some others have are saying at the moment it wasn't quite as feasible.
Right, this is really to set up, or look at setting up...
I understand that.
Community networks. And there are a couple of models in the state that have worked. And so what, what the legislation allowed is for other towns to do what these towns did. So even though it wasn't financially feasible to, to do a whole town, like a utility, you could do the center of the town. And we're fortunate, because we do have good, good broadband in Bellas Falls and in the center, and parts of this area actually doesn't have good cell service, but it does have...
Didn't we have a governor here a while back that we were going to do all this?
Hey, what's the board's position here? Just move this along, do we want to do anything with this, or nominate somebody?
Sure, if I'm all in favor of nominating somebody, sure.
Okay. Anybody in mind?
Well, she had mentioned Ms. North may be interested, so... Well, she had mentioned, uh, Ms. Martin may be interested, so, but that's the one. I don't know.
Or if you wanna do two, I think the sample motion says two. Yeah, it says me and somebody else, but just take me off and say Bonnie North and if you, one of you wants to do it, or just say Bonnie North, please.
I would, but I just don't have the time, well, to add another meeting.
Yeah, I can do it Thursday.
I'm probably gonna get swarmed out.
Make the motion, what's going?
I'll make the motion with the Rockingham Select Board. Uh, move to approve the resolution, expressing the town's interest in participating in the Wyndham Regional Broadband Project, approving, uh, Bonnie North as, uh, representative for the town.
We hear a second.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded, uh, to approve, uh, the application to resolution for the broadband and to appoint Bonnie North as a representative for the town. Any further, uh, any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
All those polled nay, motion carries. Uh, review the agenda items for next meeting, February eighteenth.
Really, all I have so far is alcohol permits, we've been having a lot of meetings and that like that.
You might have that town meeting prep coming around again.
I can do that again, yes, yes.
Anything else, anybody else? We'll think of something before we're done, I'm sure, don't we have finance that much that...
Yeah, I mean, you'll have the financial part, yeah.
Were we gonna talk about setting up the committee for the recre, or, uh, recycling?
Recycling.
Or do we wanna wait till we do the new select board turnover and start marching this one better?
Yeah, see, see who's, who's here and who ain't. Who's for what? It's, we don't have to do anything with recycling until July first, anyway, if we're gonna change the, uh, procedure now here. Hey, uh, review agenda items for joint board meeting, that's March thirty-first, we've got some time on that, but you can put your ticket caps on for that, unless you've got some suggestions tonight?
Uh, one thing, the village had suggested hearing a presentation from V-Trans on testing self-driving cars, um, and so they're interested in hearing that, and I suggested that we have that at the joint board, because both entities have jurisdiction on the roads.
Okay. All right, uh, review and approve orders, bills and warrants, make a motion.
Motion to approve the order of bills and warrants circulated here tonight.
Second.
Any questions?
Chair. Could you explain why we're paying to maintain an elevator that isn't working?
I asked Shannon to check on that one, cause I noticed that, too, and she said, let me see if she wrote a note, um, she checked on it, so I am presuming that it is appropriately paid. Um, but I do have some hope again.
She checked on it?
Yeah. She, I, I had to leave the office this afternoon.
No, wait, I don't...
I told her to check on it, and she checked on it, so...
Well, I want, why would we pay for maintenance to an elevator that isn't working?
It may have been coded improperly, but we, we obviously shouldn't pay for maintenance for an elevator that's not working. I asked that same question, I don't have the answer to you.
Okay.
I did get a call from, um, New England ADA, and, uh, they asked what our issues were, and I said this was an issue with us, um, so they're sending the Vermont ADA people, so they may be able to help us, uh, put some pressure on the elevator company that way. And they also, the woman from Boston, uh, told me that this is a common problem, it's, it's like plumbers and electricians, where, um, the folks who do this are aging out and people aren't taking their place. So there's just a lack of labor, um, for elevator operators, or elevator repairers.
Go ahead.
Well, at this point, I think, um, I got a lot of comments from just last night's meeting, from people watching at home, and they can't see everyone on the camera, so there's two people sitting here last night who weren't, aren't in most of the meeting.
Oh.
Um, when we're downstairs, where we're supposed to be holding these meetings, uh, the last joint board meeting, there wasn't enough seats for everyone here, so I think, I mean, if you look in Boston, or someplace like that, where there's tons of this kind of elevator, there's probably another company, perhaps we should be exploring other options rather than waiting on this one company.
We aren't just waiting, but, um...
It seems like we are, in that we need to get that elevator fixed.
I agree.
Whatever it costs, if a company comes from New York State, the elevator needs to be fixed.
Is there any desire on the board, I gotta just back my head thinking that the dragon, the elevator company's dragon, and to get us to put a new elevator in there, is there any interest on the board of exploring that option?
I would rather get a...
Well, we did the last night, we had Robin Sweetapple, came up and got us a grant for fifty grand to help us fix this other one. I'm just wondering, maybe we oughta put out a fueler and see if there's anything out there from her end that...
Right, I've talked, I've talked to her about it, it's, it's hard, because Lulas really are, they're a lot lower cost than regular elevators, but they're not as, as good. But, but this is a very old one, I don't know how old it is, so it might need to be replaced.
Well, that, it might be worth investigating that to see.
Yeah.
You know, if there's, if there's grant money out there available for us to replace the thing and get one that's gonna work.
Right.
It might be better off doing that than just dragging and wait for, you know, put parts on the same thing that work.
Well, and it's already, um, estimated to cost seven thousand dollars, that's just one piece of it, and that, and, and that piece is not projected, is projected to not be enough by the elevator company, so it's, it's not gonna be as small and, like, but yes, I, I've all, I've been talking about it.
It just might be worth...
Yeah.
Worth a phone call to see if there's anything out there.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Could we also reach out to other companies and see if someone can fix it?
We did, we have, we have, but we will...
I thought you said you...
No, we...
Are they the only ones around that can work on it, but like...
No, they're the only ones we had a contract with, but we called other companies, um, in the area, and they said they're not taking the customers.
Outside the area.
The, the area includes Massachusetts already, but yeah, no, we're, we're, I, I think these, the ADA people could be a real help.
Can I ask one more question?
Yep.
What tennis court lights we're paying for in January? Do you know a lot of that's about?
Hey, Dom, just feel like you find out, it's probably replacing lights, replacing bulbs.
That's from Green Mountain Power.
So it could be replacing lights, I mean, we've, we've been replacing quite a few lights, actually, we're gonna be replacing more lights, that, we checked on the lights that you talked about at Head Green, they did.
It looks like a power bill.
Yeah, well, it could've been the lamp itself, the fixture.
Good.
But I can find out.
I wasn't aware that the tennis court lights were on in January.
It's a pretty good warm day, it's gonna go out there, yeah, it's, it's ice line. Um, I have one, um, there was a five hundred eighty-seven dollar credit card charged on your card, and all it says is equipment, you know, you remember what you had?
I asked that about, um, that is for, I believe that's the cameras for the, um, uh, wastewater treatment plant, we have to, they don't have their own card, so they...
No, I just...
Sure, yeah, so it gets charged back.
But I don't know what it was for, that's all.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, the five eighty-seven one?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that's volunteer fire department helmets.
Okay, I remember, I remember having a conversation about that with one apartment, so I know that, I didn't know where it was coming out of.
Yeah, sorry, no, the, um, the cameras are somewhere else.
How much for fifteen hundred bucks?
Uh, no, it's five hundred eighty-seven dollars.
There's balance over here for a thousand. For fire helmets, Rockingham.
Yeah, that's another one, that is, um, for, there was, they had some money left over, still some money in their equipment fund, and they have helmets that are out of, um, out of date, so they, they, well, they replaced them.
I think they replaced all of them.
Okay. This was quite a few. I can't find out how many, but it was, um, it was all the funding that they had, so... I mean, they used all of the money to buy, to replace the helmets that were outdated.
I'm gonna do, any other?
The only one I have is, um, I think it was, uh, my tax accident up there on Gastro, um, it's covered by insurance, eleven thousand four hundred dollars, uh, plus there's some towing bills coming next time around, but there's one turn of oil pan that was leaking, I'm wondering if that was leaking before or after the accident? I, I can ask.
Um, okay.
They, when I read the, the slip, it did say something about, they discovered that they made repairs, that the oil pan was leaking, so I'm just wondering if it was a result of the accident, cause then they should go on the insurance, not, out of town repair money.
Right.
And it was told, they told to replace it, of course, Nida, cause they said they had no, no oil pressure in the truck.
That's not good. That's a bad one.
I grew up a lot the way from Kingwood Ford, but I just think made it, wow, and that's the same thing, it was a whole rust, right in the oil paint. Okay, uh, other business, Ben?
Um, Tom? Where are we at with the negotiations, meet, preparing for reunion negotiation?
First, oh, okay, executive session, first we need to, um, take care of the personnel rules that got bumped back to the committee, and that meeting is tomorrow, so we need to take care of that, I'm not sure how many meetings we'll need, and then that needs to go back to the joint boards, or maybe each board can do it individually, um, and then we, then we get going, so we need to, um, meet, I mean, we could talk about that in the executive session, actually, if you wanna have another executive session. Yeah, we can, contracts and negotiations.
Personal...
No, you're talking about the contracts.
Negotiations.
Yep.
Sarah?
Just wanna thank Charlie Hunter, he's, um, stepping off the Opera House Committee because he's, he's, business is doing well, he's traveling too much, um, so I'm gonna thank him for the time he put into that, and he was very helpful, um, as we looked at the opera house, so thank you, Charlie.
Um, several, a couple of months ago, maybe you approved a sixty-five hundred dollar invoice for some flyway lights or something downstairs in the theater? Do you remember that?
Yeah, but I don't know if they even put them in, so that funding may still be there. Yeah, the Opera House Committee talked about that, so it was, um...
Yeah, I just wondered, because I wonder if they, if, if where they were gonna put them in, if it was, has been, okay, or approved by an engineer to put them up where they were putting them, rather than having, put them up and then find out if they weren't sturdy enough, and somebody gets cold conked when they fall down?
Yeah, that would be bad, um...
Uh, yeah, it would, I mean, it's bad enough to get plaster coming down, down there, but...
Yeah, no, they, if that's, is, is, is it the fly, um, rock...
I don't know, I think it was something like, I think it was a flyway thing, and...
Yeah, the, and they not getting put in, cause it was too late for that show.
Okay, cause I, I understand it should be inspected by an engineer at least to make sure that it's, it's gonna hold up, putting them up.
Yeah, now, that was, that was the...
I know it was on that.
Yeah, but they didn't go up because of that, they, um, they, they needed a structural engineer to go and look at that, but the light, the lights went in a little long time ago.
Yeah, that was a different thing. This, this, this was so that they could, um, raise and lower a, a backdrop.
Yeah, okay. Hey, uh, well, I guess we're gonna have a quick and short, uh, executive session tonight, there will be no comments coming out, so if someone would like to make a motion, I have some here, it's gonna be two.
Yeah, it's the one that...
Eight.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion, then we enter into an executive session, where premature general knowledge, which is to place a municipal, a substantial disadvantage, and the reason for the executive session would be labor relations agreements with employees, um, so that's the first motion.
All right, shall we hear a second?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded, all those in favor would say aye.
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 Second.
Okay, so, uh, I move that the board enter into an executive session to discuss, uh, labor relations agreements with employees, um, under provisions of Title One, Section three thirteen A, one of the Vermont state statutes.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded, all those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
All those polled nay, we are in, in executive session.